October 16, 2017, Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order. I'll call on Commissioner Jimmy Keith for the invocation and to lead us in the pledge. Commissioner Jimmy Keith.
Thank you. If you would stand, please. Dear Lord, grant us peace to all of us. Show us wisdom and compassion as we go about your business tonight. Keep, keep safe all our armed forces or first responders, our families. Protect them in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They told me not to show all those pictures from Stedman, so, so I told them to hold off on the slideshow, Mr. Horn. But it gives me great honor at this particular point in time to recognize one of the most outstanding persons in our community. Mr. Horn, if you and your wife would please come forward. You know, it does give me a great honor, and it is about celebrating people. And so, for many of you who may not know, and for those who do know, and I know all of those from Stedman and from this community know you, Mr. Horn. Mr. Horn was a county commissioner for 12 years, from 1970 to 1982. He served as the mayor to the town of Stedman from 1997 until resigning from office in September of 2017. He served as the town of Stedman commissioner from 1966 to 1970, and again, from 1995 to 1996. During his time as mayor, Mr. Horn was instrumental in attaining city sewer for the town of Stedman. He has worked to improve and enhance the town's beauty and offer more commercial and retail business opportunities throughout the town. He has served on various commissions and appointments, too numerous to name, but some of those include the Mid-Carolina Council of Government for 20 years and the State Personnel Commission for nine years. Mr. Horn is married to the beautiful Fay Horn, and they have, I'll get it right this time, four sons and six granddaughters. He enjoys church, racing, fishing, traveling, working, and staying active. And because of that, and because of that service, this board of commissioners saw fit to give a proclamation in your honor, and I'd like to present the proclamation to you, Mr. Horn, for all your years of service.
Thank you.
All right. And we wouldn't let you get away from here. I'm gonna take that from you without giving you a gift from the board of commissioners and from the county. And you can open that up and, and just see what you got in the bag.
Okay.
Open that up.
Beautiful pot.
Let me wave it for you.
Cumberland County, North Carolina. Appreciate that board and everybody involved in our town. We just had a wonderful time serving and appreciate all the support we've had.
I'd ask his family to stand, who's been his rock and his support for all of these years. Thank you. You, you know you've done something right when the mayors of all the cities from around Cumberland County come out to support, so I'd ask all the mayors to stand. your hand and stand, please. All right. Thank you so very much.
It's a great honor to receive all this, all accolades, whatever. We, we, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the people of Cumberland County and the town of Stedman. It's been a great honor. We've, we feel like we've got a good county and a wonderful town, good place to raise our children. We try to keep Stedman kind of, kind of quiet, but anyway, it's, it is a wonderful place. And we appreciate the county commissioners for this honor of honoring and recognizing us for our service. I enjoyed serving here for many years, and we started at the old courthouse and came to this one, and it's just been a great service. And a lot of the folks that supported me then, and we, Virginia Thompson, her husband served with me, and most of the commissioners that I served with are long gone, but we had a great board. And we had a wonderful family to put up with. My wonderful wife, I know. She's got the most patience in the body. And her father served for the county for 42 years as a deputy, and he was a wonderful person.
Anything you want to say?
Appreciate all the folks coming and...
And one last thing. I think Commissioner Council has a, a special letter that was sent to you.
I do, Mayor.
Thank you, Janet.
If I could read it, hey, but on a personal note, I have got to say that you have always been a gentleman, whether you agreed or you disagreed. You always were able to get along with all kinds of people, and you love this county. I was a little girl when you served.
Y'all just close your eyes.
But you and your wife, we used to talk at different meetings and everything, and I always ran into you, and you always made everybody feel welcome. I was always glad to see you, and you're a good-looking man.
Pretty lady.
Thank you. Let me, you gotta come around and shake all our hands, but let me read this letter. Wait a minute, let me read this. Just hold my hand, baby. The Honorable Billy D. Horn, P.O. Box 325, Stedman, North Carolina. Dear Billy, congratulations on being recognized by the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners for your many years of service to the citizens of Cumberland County and the state of North Carolina. This is an outstanding honor and one which is richly deserved. Your service to our country, your service on boards and commissions, your time as mayor of Stedman, and your service to your community and your church has made a difference in so many lives. You are a wonderful example for others to follow. Again, congratulations on being honored for your work, and I wish you much success in all your future endeavors. With warm personal regards, I am very truly yours, Roy Coper.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's all the Lord coming around, I believe.
You can take the, the walk of honor while they're running.
Right here.
Oh, she was standing next to the young man.
You ought to quit. I will.
And I would like to recognize Ms. Virginia Oliver, who was a former member of this Cumberland County Board of Commissioners and served with Mr. Horn on this board. Thank you for coming out tonight also.
At this time, I'd like to call on Crystal Glover. Hold up, Ms. Glover, who is the Youth Development and Culture Arts Program Coordinator and head of the Fayetteville Cumberland County Youth Council, to introduce some of the new members of this year's youth council.
Hello, hello.
Hey.
How are you guys today?
Good evening.
You know I like to put the children up front, not myself, but I am going to ask the members that are with us here today on the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council to please stand. These are some of the new members that are part of the youth council this year. We have a total of about 48 members, so these are our newer members. We have been reestablished for four years now. Very excited and proud to say that. Still thriving, still growing. And while they're standing, I'm gonna ask Ms. Rebecca Mitchell, who's the president of the youth council, to come for a quick second.
Hello.
Good morning.
So, I would like to invite Nick, too. So, I am the president of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
And I am the youth advisor of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. So, we're gonna talk about our recent project, the Glow Fest. The Glow Fest is basically our annual 5K fun run that was held on September 16, 2017, and there were over 300 runners that participated and enjoyed themselves, especially the ones that stayed after for the glow party, which overall created another memory for those people in our council as a whole.
And so, on behalf of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, we wanted to present you with an award for being our best supporter. We thank you so much for your attendance at the Glow Fest and your support of our youth council.
And let me tell you, for Mr. Keith and for Mr. Booth down there, I was at the glow run. Didn't say I ran, but I was down at the glow. But I will tell you...
He was at the ice cream vending cart, I thought.
The wonderful thing about the glow run, and y'all can see that, y'all can stay right here, because they're gonna all come through in a minute. The wonderful thing about the glow run from our perspective is the entire thing, and I think Crystal will attest to this, was put on by the members of the youth council. Not the adults, but these young adults here in our community that are doing wonderful things. One of the things we want everybody to realize is that we look in the paper each and every day, and we see all the bad, and we see all of that. There are actually wonderful things happening in our community, and there are outstanding young adults in our community who, each and every day, go to school and do things to make this a better place. Now, with that said, the one thing we do want is for them to come back to our community after they go off and go to college. We want you to come back to our community to be able to serve. Our two members up here tonight are our youth council members who will serve tonight at our meeting. At the end of the meeting, they will critique these other commissioners. I got the award, so they won't critique me too much, and tell us how we did in terms of our meeting tonight. So, I'm gonna ask all of the youth council members to come and walk and shake every last one of these hands of, we ain't got anywhere to go tonight, anyway. I gotta be with the same...
State Trevor.
Don't poke her, don't poke her. Where you go, Spur? All right. How you doing? All right. Don't poke her, don't poke her. Where you go, Spur? All right. What's up, my man? Where you go, Spur? First time? Where you go, Spur? Hey, darling. Always good to see you. All right. Ready? Excited? I need a little kiss. Come over there, boy. Yeah. I want to put this for you, yeah. I certainly want it. So, first time? You're not, you're not? It's your first one? You gotta go, John, or something. How you doing? Where you going? We know, see? What's up, my baby? Where you going? Watch. Watch. Keep it down my back. Oh, yeah. Oh, see, get it back. She got the coke, she got the coke? Where you going? And always, my dear, that's pretty good, Sam. That's my friend. That's the president. I'm from the Johnson's, y'all, and they mean to talk. Y'all here. I appreciate you. And we should have a time to talk.
Pay no attention to the man and the wife.
You sound like the liberal mom, man.
All right. We've got our public comment period, which is 15 minutes, and I'll call on the manager to read the public comment policy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The public comment period shall last no longer than 15 minutes, with each speaker being limited to a maximum of three minutes. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. They should address the board and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. The public comment period is not intended to require any response from the board of commissioners. Speakers must be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal tax will not be tolerated. Any, you're welcome to submit any supporting documentations with the clerk to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am clerk, are there any speakers?
We have three speakers.
All right. If you call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Ms. Anne Schrader.
Ms. Schrader, you may come forward.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name's Anne Schrader, and I reside at 223 Stedman Street. We've spoken on behalf of Citizen and Environmental Protection and Against Duke Energy's Proposed Atlantic Coast Pipeline, poised to cross our beautiful state and county. We've informed you that this major pipeline, the third-largest in the nation, is not needed with electric demands plateauing and renewable projects coming online, that we are already leaders in the nation in renewable energy, an industry that is truly clean, produces long-term jobs, and doesn't harm our precious environment. Duke Energy has an unsafe and unlawful track record of recklessly polluting our rivers with toxic coal ash, and now they want the citizens of Cumberland County and North Carolina to pay to clean it up at a 16.7% rate increase. And we ask you, our county board, to speak out at this injustice, to ensure the citizens of Cumberland County the fiscal responsibility you promised to uphold. And Duke Energy also wants the citizens and ratepayers to pay for last year's Hurricane Matthew repairs, the same hurricane that destroyed my family's business and thousands of other families' businesses and homes. And so, we ask you to speak out at this injustice, as we are still all suffering the cost of that environmental disaster. And the fossil fuel industry is one of the leading contributors of climate change that cause hurricanes. Their fracked, unnatural gas pipelines make the climate crisis worse due to pipeline leakage and intentional venting of methane from drilling sites, compressor stations, M&amp;R stations, and power plants. Methane is 86 to 100 times more powerful at trapping heat in the atmosphere than carbon dioxide created by burning coal, oil, and gas. And Duke Energy also wants the citizens and ratepayers to pay for this devastating pipeline that would clear-cut thousands of acres of forest, blast into hundreds of wetlands and rivers, including our Kethier River, which is already polluted and is our source of drinking water. And so, we ask you, county board, to speak out against this injustice alongside of us. But you've claimed to have no authority over this massive 36-diameter pipeline that would cross the length of our county and state, and I've already asked you, well, what about your moral or your divine authority, the very attributes you pledge allegiance and pray to before each of these board meetings? If we citizen voice our outrage at these injustices at public hearings, so should you, our county board, who we trust to ensure our safety and a healthy environment, the very promises of your own mission statement. And finally, when we stand and we place our hands over our hearts to pledge our allegiance to the flag, we trust that you, our elected county board, would not quietly allow the very corrupt corporations that would take our very justice away. Please help us. We need you now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tom Clark.
Mr. Clark?
Before my time starts, can I just ask a question about a...
No, sir. This is a public comment period. You have three minutes to go ahead and speak.
Okay. It's a, okay, I'll just, this, on September 21st, 2017, I took a trip to Russia, but not really. It just felt that way. I attended a public hearing in the hearing room of the historic courthouse in Fayetteville, North Carolina. This hearing was for a special permit, use permit, for a proposed M&amp;R station and a proposed 290-foot tower. Atlantic Coast Pipeline reps were allowed to stand and discuss this proposed tower and station, even the chain-link fence and the landscape around it. In their own permit request, they state that the proposed tower will be constructed as part of Atlantic, Atlantic's Fayetteville Metering and Regulation Station. Anyone that reads the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, Atlantic Coast Pipeline Special Use Application to Cumberland County can easily see that it includes three major components, which are, number one, the proposed tower, number two, the proposed M&amp;R station, and number three, the most important, the proposed pipeline. But yet, when I chose to speak of the proposed M&amp;R station or the proposed pipeline, I was denied that right. The, the entire meeting was a clear violation of the rights of citizens to voice their opinion on what is being proposed directly within the A.C. permit application submitted in Cumberland County. The primary purpose of this M&amp;R station is to release fracked gas into our air to maintain the correct pressure on the pipeline, and that will occur several times. This is called blowback. I just wish that our officials will stop looking like a puppy looking at someone at ACP with a pork chop, the pipeline, standing in front of them. This pork chop is poison to our county and state with all of its pollution to our water and air. I would only wish that our leaders would stand for the people sometimes and not big business such as Duke and Dominion. After all, without us, there would not be a Duke or Dominion. And what I was gonna ask, since I've got a little bit of time, is about the public hearing by the Cumberland County Board of Adjustment on Thursday, September 21st. This was discussed, I don't know if y'all knew about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. We do. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Ms. Carol Knight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me speak.
Pull that microphone down just a little bit. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Hello, my name is Carol Knight. Thank you for having me speak. I'm speaking about something that, I, I started a business in 2003 to help businesses to move forward, because I have a heart for small businesses and the owners of them. And over the years, I've noticed that so many businesses are struggling, and I wanted to do something about it. So, I'm here to let you know that I've created a platform at the Crown Coliseum for small businesses to take a part of. I believe that if we work together and strengthen the small businesses, they can affect the economy tremendously, since they do employ ha, more than half of the businesses in, around the state. So, one of, one of the things that I'm doing is a small business expo at the Crown Coliseum, and it will be held on January 23rd, and I need assistance as I'm trying to help other businesses to grow and to move forward, with the things that they're doing is to, to allow them to be gathered in one place and then invite the public to come and... Anyone that reads the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, Atlantic Coast Pipeline Special Use Application to Cumberland County can easily see that it includes three major components, which are, number one, the proposed tower, number two, the proposed M and R station, and number three, the most important, the proposed pipeline. But yet, when I chose to speak of the proposed M and R station or the proposed pipeline, I was denied that right. The, the entire meeting was a clear violation of the rights of citizens to voice their opinion on what is being proposed directly within the A C. Permit Application submitted in Cumberland County. The primary purpose of this, this M and R station is to release fracked gas into our air to maintain the correct pressure on the pipeline, and that will occur several times. This is called blowback. I just wish that our officials will stop looking like a puppy looking at someone at A C. P. with a pork chop, the pipeline, standing in front of them. This pork chop is poison to our county and state with all of its pollution to our water and air. I would only wish that our leaders would stand for the people sometimes and not big business such as Duke and Dominion. After all, without us, there would not be a Duke or Dominion. And what I was gonna ask, since I've got a little bit of time, is about the public hearing by the Cumberland County Board of Adjustment on Thursday, September twenty-first. This was discussed, I didn't know if y'all knew about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. We do. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Ms. Carol Knight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me speak.
Pull that microphone down just a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Hello, my name is Carol Knight. Thank you for having me speak. I'm speaking about something that, I, I started a business in two thousand and three to help businesses to move forward, because I have a heart for small businesses and the owners of them. And over the years, I've noticed that so many businesses are struggling, and I wanted to do something about it. So I'm here to let you know that I've created a platform at the Crown Coliseum for small businesses to take a part of. I believe that if we work together and strengthen the small businesses, they can affect the economy tremendously, since they do employ ha, more than half of the businesses in, around the state. So one of, one of the things that I'm doing is a small business expo at the Crown Coliseum, and it will be held on January twenty-third. And I need assistance as I'm trying to help other businesses to grow and to move forward. But the things that they're doing is to, to allow them to be gathered in one place and then invite the public to come and support this, these small businesses that are striving so much. I'm believing for more than two hundred exhibitors, and in addition to that, there's going to be free training that I'm just going to pour...